Yeah, we do. Jane Stuckerman from the Houston Chronicle. Where's Jane right there? Thank you.
Where is she?
Jane, you need to...
Oh, yeah. Okay, I can see you now.
And Andrew Christman from Community Impact. Hey, Andrew. I met with him the other day. Jim Kane, the former superintendent of Klein ISD. Hey, Jim. Glad to have you. And I think anybody else? Okay.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Head. At this point in time, we need to approve the minutes of our June 6, 2019 budget workshop and minutes of the June 6 workshop and regular meeting. And we're going to do them separately. First, we will entertain a motion on the minutes of the June 6, 2019 budget workshop. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt the minutes from... Mayor.
Second, okay.
Mayor, June 6, 2019. If there are no questions, we'll proceed with the vote. All those in... Art, you were absent that day.
That's right.
Okay, so abstain if you would. So all those in favor, vote by the usual sign. And there's one person abstained, Art Murillo. Now, we need a motion to approve the minutes of our regular June 6 meeting workshop and our regular meeting. May I have a motion? Second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt the minutes of our regular workshop and regular meeting. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Chancellor, do you have any thing that you would like to tell the group about meetings, workshop, and et cetera over the last month or two?
I would like to tell the board that our enrollments are looking pretty good. We were up... This morning, we were up 3.4, I think, and we budgeted for 2.5. And so we've been holding pretty steady for some time. So we're keeping an eye on that. And then the other thing I'd like to acknowledge, Shaw Ardalon Shaw, or the University Park has been recognized or receiving an award for one of the innovators from the Houston Business Journal. Is that... Do you want to tell us what that is, please?
Do you want to come on there?
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't going to do this because he wouldn't leave, but we'll do it anyway.
Oh, okay. Well, we're giving the time frame.
Yes, sir. In fact, in the past two months, we have won three awards. One from Houston Business Journal, one from League of Innovation that we shared with Cyfair. Also, they were one of the winners. And one is international for the first time in the United States. So we're very honored to be recognized as one of the most innovative college systems in the country. So this one was the first time from Houston Business Journal.
Good. Congratulations to you and your staff.
Good job.
Anything else? Okay.
Yeah, let's do it now. We have a new attorney. Mario, if you could introduce the...
Yeah, so we have a new lawyer. After looking for several months, we filled the position a few weeks ago, and she's actually here. So I wanted to introduce her to vouch for her so that when you get an email, you know she legitimately works for us. So it's Catherine Martin. She's right back there. You're going to have to stand up. There she is. So just real quickly. So Catherine comes from a major downtown law firm, and she's a graduate of Stanford University School of Law and a graduate of Harvard College. And so we're very happy to have her on our staff.
What's the second school, Harvard College?
She went to Harvard College and Stanford for law school.
Wow, okay.
Yes, sir. Wow.
I've got one last thing.
You know what? Would it be an embarrassment to get her to come up and say just a few words? Come on up. Yes. I don't too often get a chance to talk to graduates of Stanford and Harvard.
I want to thank all of you for welcoming me to the Lone Star College community. It's an honor to work here. And thank you for giving me this great welcome. Appreciate it very much.
Glad to have you. Welcome.
So the other thing I wanted to let the board know and people in the audience, we have received approval from the coordinating board for two bachelor's degrees. One is the Bachelor of Science in Nursing, which I may have already mentioned. Is the Bachelor of Science in Energy Manufacturing and Skills Trade. And we should be hearing any day, according to Dr. Dwight Smith and Valerie Jones back in the back who are working diligently on this, we should be hearing about our approval for our cybersecurity program. That will be... If we can get those bachelor's degrees, we'll be in that small group of colleges that can offer those few bachelor's degrees. But Valerie and Dwight have been working on this. We've got Senator Creighton working on it, and now we have Representative Wally working on it also to help us, so.
So two of them are approved?
Two of them are approved by the coordinating board. We still need approval from Saks, but we'll get that. And we'll be starting these programs in September of 2020. We'll start recruiting students right after the first of the year. So we'll come back to you with kind of an organizational structure and what we're talking... We'll be talking about. It's a little different. It's going to be embedded. These are college programs that are embedded at the college. There's a college-wide program, but they're embedded at the campuses. So we're working with the colleges to use their facilities and some of their people, but it's a separate program.
That's great news. Good job, White. Okay, board members, you now have an opportunity to tell us about activities that you have been involved in over the last couple of months. Anyone would like to share? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Bestie Solomon.
You bet. I want to thank Dr. Person from Kingwood College for allowing me to join our... At the Lake Houston Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Update, Higher Education Chair Brandon Creighton spoke, as well as Public Education Chair Dan Huberty in our district, which was nice. And it just underscores the importance of our elected officials who serve in our communities, what they are able to do for us. Catherine stood after the presentation and thanked Senator Creighton in person in front of the audience for the $13 million Harvey money. And he appreciated that. And then second, Dr. Cashvala allowed me to come by and gave me a tour of Cyfair and enjoyed it. It's nice and warm, but she spent a lot of time with me and went in and out of a lot of buildings and spoke to a lot of people. Little excitement in the admissions area, students and parents there registering their children, excuse me, their students. So anyway, things were going well, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Anyone else? Okay, I have a couple. One of them occurred today. I was invited to a closure of a reading summer program that occurred over in the south side of Klein ISD at Nitch Elementary over the summer. And as most of you probably don't know, Nitch Elementary is located real close, you know, to Aldine and the Acres Homes area. The majority of the folks that live in that area are on free and reduced lunch, so it's a real low-income area. And so Houston North, Dr. Quentin Wright had a graduation exercise, you know, for those young kids. And it was well-attended by the parents in the area. Some of the teachers from Nitch and other places were there also. The students were very, very happy that they had an opportunity to participate. There were several ministers there. And I admire what Quentin and his staff are doing to get those kids acclimated to wanting to go to college as they get older. They have their beautiful robes on and et cetera. They receive backpacks, you know, from the school, T-shirts. And I know that those students will go back to their community and to their schools and use those, our bookcases, whatever you call those things. And backpacks, okay, yeah. We didn't have those when I grew up, backpacks, thank you. And also, had beautiful T-shirts. And so Quentin's staff is talking about enlarging that program next year. And I think that you will see a growth in the number of folks that attend college, you know, from those areas. And those kind of things make me really emotional, because I had a person just like Quentin when I was that age that encouraged me to break the norm that occurred in my family. And thank you, Quentin, for doing that, you know, for those kids. The second thing that I did a week or so ago, and I can't remember when it was, Dwight, but Springfield College, as you know, has an office at the University Park. And we had the signing ceremonies, you know, for that particular college a couple of weeks ago. And that's another opportunity for our kids to get a BS degree here locally rather than having to go all for it. So thank you, guys, for inviting me to all of those wonderful type activities. I enjoy going to those type things, whether it's day or night. Whenever you need me, feel free to call on me. And also, Shaw is... Numbers for his fall enrollment will go up by one today. And I don't know how to navigate the systems, though Shaw's folks enrolled me, and I'm all ready to go. So thank you for the good job. Anybody else have any comments?
I just want to make sure everybody knows, we had 200... We gave 200 tickets for the Astros game. We had a large crowd at the Astros game last week. And unfortunately, they lost. Oakland hit a three-run homer in the top of the ninth inning. I watched the end of it from home, by the way. But I... We had... That is a great partnership for us, I think. I mean, not only are they good guys, they just signed one of the best pitchers there is, so we'll see. So I had a nice talk with Reed Ryan, who Gerald knows, and I know him, about the relationship we have with them and try to do more. It's good stuff.
Yeah. I hate I couldn't go. Yeah. Okay, great. Okay. Now, and do we have any citizens wishing to speak tonight? Okay.
Yes, hello. I'm Max Evans. I represent the Gideon Organization, the local organization here in the Woodlands. And we just have a request. You know, I'm sure you know that it's a group of businessmen, professional men, that distribute Bibles. We're known for putting Bibles in hotel rooms, but we also put Bibles in lots of other places. We military, medical facilities, hospitals, first responders, but we go to all kinds of schools, especially colleges and universities. And the reason I came, we've been coming to the Montgomery... My group, which is just in the Woodlands, we've been coming to the Montgomery campus for like 10 or 12 years. Very familiar. You know, we like it. It's been successful. We handed out many, many little New Testaments, the green testaments to college kids. But what happens is, we would like to get permission to do our distribution same as we do at all the other colleges. We stand on the sidewalk. And if we... At that particular place, and I don't know about all the campuses, but if we use the free speech zone, it just... We can't use it because the traffic is not there. And we don't speak. We don't teach. We only give out testaments. And so our request is that we... Normally, at the other schools, we'll be at Sam Houston Saturday. We're going to College Station in September, is we stand on the walk and we merely ask people, would you like a free testament? And we neither impede, we don't approach people. And if they'd like to take one, they do. And we've handed out thousands upon thousands. And what we'd like to do is that at the Lone Star campus is do it the same way that we do at the other schools. And it really works well. It's a great program. And I appreciate the time that you've given us. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Evans, what I would say, the chancellor's here, and he or someone on his administration will get back with you and let you know
Very good.
what the decision is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. Members of the Board, Board Counsel, Dr. Head, fellow Lone Star employees and guests here tonight, it is good to see you all after the July break. Even though there has been no board meeting since June, we have all been plenty busy. We especially want to acknowledge the hard work on the part of many of you here that has gone into preparing the budget that will be presented tonight for fiscal year 2020. As we said in our AFT presentation to the Board in May, we recognize that this has not been an easy budget year. We are still struggling with the losses from Hurricane Harvey. And although the Texas Legislature was helpful to us in dealing with those losses, they were not so generous with funding for community colleges in general. In light of these challenges, we in the AFT wish to especially acknowledge the attention to employee pay reflected in tonight's proposed budget. As a union, compensation for college faculty and staff is obviously a matter of great concern to us, and we have appealed on behalf of our brother and sister employees on a number of occasions. The 3% cost of living increase proposed in tonight's budget for most employees is right in line with increases in the Consumer Price Index over the last year. This budget keeps college employees caught up with inflation. We are also appreciative that the new budget allows the college to continue to deal with pay inequities related to salary compression. We especially appreciate the 4.8% pay increase proposed for adjunct faculty. As you know, we spoke with you at the May meeting about our concerns that adjunct pay has been stagnant for three years while inflation had increased by 6.5% over that timeframe. The pay increase proposed tonight will go a long way toward helping our adjunct faculty catch up. Thank you for taking the concerns we have raised to heart and for stepping up with significant relief for some of our most at-risk employees. Looking ahead to future budgets, to use a favorite phrase of Chairman Dr. Alton Smith, we urge the Board to maintain the momentum. AFT advocates routinely using the Consumer Price Index as a floor for annual salary increases with as much generosity as the college can responsibly afford above that floor to help employees to get ahead and not just keep up. We also advocate for salary increases for adjunct faculty each year. For the next few years, we advocate that their salary increases be a percentage point or two above CPI to help them catch up from the three years without a raise. As one of the premier two-year institutions in the state, perhaps a good goal would be to raise our adjunct salary up into the top 10 among Texas community colleges. That, however, is all for future consideration. For tonight, we in the AFT wish to simply say thank you for prioritizing the financial well-being of Lone Star College faculty and staff in this year's budget. And we express our support for action item number one, the budget for fiscal year 2020. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, John. Okay, trustees, let's now consider the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to have pulled for individual considerations? If not, item one will be considered separately, and also item 25. First, let's have a motion and a second for items two through 24 and 26 through 27. I got a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt those items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Now, we will consider item one. I would like to have a motion on item one and a second before... A second? Okay, it's been moved and properly second. They would consider item one, and Jennifer's going to explain that item to us in pretty much detail.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. First, I want to say at each of your seats, you should have a hard copy of the proposed budget book. A lot of work goes into this. It's over 100 pages to provide a lot of detail about our proposed budget. And also, right at the June 6 workshop, we spent an hour going over the highlights there as well, really the outline of what is included in this proposed budget. And this was provided to everybody electronically about a week ago. So given the budget workshop, and I will say there are no significant changes. Sometimes we have some things shift. There are no significant changes this year from the outline that I presented at the June 6 budget workshop to what is included here today. So just want to go through some highlights of what is in front of you for FY '20, right? This would be effective September 1st. So for our highlights, first, in terms of revenues and resources, net, it's 16 million of new resources. The total amount of new revenues exceeds that amount and comes from several different places. There's 8.3 million coming from the tuition and fee increases that this board approved back in March. We also are estimating 8.3 million growth in property tax revenues from growth in property values. That is based on an assumption on no tax rate increase. This board also approved increases in out-of-district international fees. And that's about 2.8 million. As Dr. Head mentioned earlier, this budget does include an assumption of 2.5% enrollment growth, and that would bring in an additional 2.5 million. And then there is the additional 700,000 from the state allocation. So that's a high-level summary of what new revenues are included in this proposed budget. In terms of new expenditures, so I mentioned on a net basis, all of those revenues results in 16 million of new resources. And we have 15 million of net new expenses. And so included in that is 6.3 million for the 3% across the board. There's 2.5 million for compression pay adjustments. Every year, especially with our bond program, we need to include funds for new facilities opening. That's 3.4 million. We are adding 28 new faculty in this budget. That's 2 million. And then finally, 1.5 million is for the 4.8% increase to adjuncts. And there, I would mention that this increase, we estimate, would put us in the top three of the Gulf Coast community colleges for our adjunct pay. So that's the expenditure highlights. For performance metrics, so this was not presented at the June budget workshop. Last year, we did present the allocation of the performance metrics in June, but this year, the presidents did work on a new model for allocating performance funds. They worked on making sure there was better alignment with how the state allocates their success points. So with that work that happened on that model, I have this ready to share with you tonight. So in the June workshop, I did share that we had allocated 500,000 in performance metrics, and this is showing you how that's being allocated among the colleges. I do want to mention here that for North Harris, had they been included here based on their performance, they would have also received an allocation out of the 500,000. They did have positive improvements in their performance metrics, but given the other budget adjustments that is occurring there, they are basically being handled for their enrollment and performance realignment separately. In the same way, Houston North is also being looked at separately in terms of alignment. But I did want to mention there that there is performance improvements at North Harris as well. But for the remaining colleges, this is how the 500,000 is being allocated.
Just make sure they know also that if we hit our 2.5, another 500,000 will be provided to the colleges, correct?
Yes, that was included in the outline presented at the June workshop. There is another 500,000 for allocation based on growth. And for that, we are going to wait until we see the fall numbers, the final numbers, to allocate that out. So yes, there's another 500,000.
That way, if we don't hit the 2.5, we didn't want to give the money out and then have to turn around and come back in. But I think we're going to be fine. But we'll see.
2.5, that's the growth you're talking about?
That is the projected growth in credit hours, right?
Credit hours, yes, in credit hours. And so if we hit that system-wide, then there's another 500,000 to be allocated.
Based on what Link says, we ought to be around 4%.
Oh, really?
So if we don't hit 4, Link?
And then also want to mention that this proposed budget does include us staying at 16%. It would mean us ending the fiscal year '20, so August 31, 2020, ending that year at our 16% reserve goal is included in the proposed budget presented to you. So from here, just the timeline first, obviously, tonight is the first major step with the Board's consideration of the FY 2020 budget. The next significant thing that needs to happen from here is the tax rate. We received the certified values late August, and then throughout September is when the Board would propose the tax rate, hold two public hearings, and then at the October Board meeting, vote to adopt a tax rate. So this is the timeline that would be in front of us from here.
So for new board members, those... The meetings, we have to have five people on September the 17th and 25th, and those meetings usually are over in five or 10 minutes unless somebody wants to talk. So... But we have to have a quorum, or we can't approve the budget and the tax rate.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? I have a couple. I guess I should know this. On the employee raise that's effective September 1st, when will that start showing up in their paychecks? And I guess I should know.
So there's different dates, actually. For the across-the-board, that one is effective September 1st. They should first see that September 15th.
Okay.
The compression pay adjustments, that one is a mid-year implementation. So that one is going to be effective March 1st, so they should see that mid-March.
Now, approximately, how many employees are involved in the compression adjustments? Do you have any idea?
I'm not personally. I don't have that off the top of my head.
It's about 1,200 will be in... 1,200? About 1,200. So can you go back to that slide just for a minute?
This one?
Yes. So we would...
Oh, it's on there. Okay.
We would implement that March 1, so the employees, about 1,200 employees, would start seeing an increase in pay on March the 15th. Does that sound right? Okay. So we will... Do you want to come back to the board later and talk about the impact of compression, or you want to talk now, very briefly? Do you want to just very briefly talk about it? Go ahead. Well, what I want them to hear is how many employees are impacted and what that looks like.
It's about 1,200 roughly. The increases range from $500 to 16,000, actually. It is going to be capped at 15%. And so no one's going to get more than 15% increase, but some people are going to get as much as a 15% increase, which is why we have a number of about $16,000. So one person will go from making whatever they make on March 1st to making $16,000 more on March 1st and get paid right before spring break.
So this is separate from the 3%, and then the following year, do you want to explain how that works the following year in the budget? Thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, that goes to the note that I have here. So the compression pay adjustments in total... adjustments in total are going to be five million dollars worth of adjustments. Um, but since we're implementing mid-year, um, in FY twenty twenty, the cost to our budget is two and a half million. That does mean that as we're building the FY twenty-one budget, as we're estimating new revenues, we need to account for taking two point five million of that right away to pay for the other half of these compression pay adjustments. So that's how it works with this mid-year implementation in the budget.
So when we showed the board, uh, the five-year plan, we had, um, twelve, fourteen, fifteen million for our compression overall, long-term? Initially, okay.
Initially, yeah.
So we've got an incremental plan to raise the staff salary. I mean, we always take a look at our salaries, but the staff salaries were the ones that we thought were the most.
I'm sorry, I can't get my phone.
Sorry about that. We have a technology problem up here. The, the, uh, so we have a, I mean, so we've addressed the, the faculty, and we'll come back to that, but we always take a look at salaries and make sure that we do want our employees to, um, we have a great place to work here. We want to keep them. We value, especially our staff, and so we're working on that, so. No, we don't.
Okay, zero dollars, huh? Okay, anything else, Jen?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, I just want to thank you and everyone that worked on this from your team. Don't know if you want to recognize them.
Uh, yes, please. Um, could my team, uh, and actually, not just my team, there's a lot of people from throughout the system, uh, you know, in the different areas and, and the colleges too. Could everyone, if you've worked on the budget, please stand up, because it's going to be most of the room.
Stand up, Link.
Well, we gave them a chance, that's the main thing.
Good job, as you.
You know.
You can tell that they love the attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they put the numbers together, the colleges and the vice chancellors put their numbers together. There's a lot of work, I can tell you from being at the college for years, that's a heck of a lot of work to figure out where the, where the dollars go and where they should go and taking a look at it. So they have some discretion over the money that they have over how they want to, how they want to put that together, so.
Yeah, by far, it is definitely not just my team. It is a coordinated effort throughout the whole college.
This is about a, I know we started talking about the budget like we will for next year. We already been talking about next year's budget, but, um, this usually starts in October, September and October, where we start taking a look at everything, because we can tell, the reason for that is we can start taking a look at the fall enrollments, and then that helps us in the long-term. And then, as you know, is then we start looking at the next session and what that looks like and, and what assessed values starts looking like. So that's a seven, eight-month effort every year. It's a seven or eight-month effort, so.
I had two follow-up questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Speaking of legislation, um, Dr. Head, I was going to ask if there's any legislative impact from this past, or recently completed session on our budget?
Yeah, major one, because of the, um, it's a good question. The, can you go to the slide that shows seven hundred thousand? That's the lowest that it's been that I can remember. And that had to do, so what happens with the new allocation? First of all, the, um, the total allocation was sixty-eight million for the biennium, so that's thirty-four million a year. It's carved up among the fifty community college districts. We normally get five, six, seven, eight million a year. And so the hurricane and the enrollment, well, first, two things. One is the state allocation was not anywhere near what we thought it was going to be. It was about half of what we thought, less than half. Secondly, the hurricane hit us in the enrollment numbers, where we took that dip. So they'll take a look at contact hours over, uh, over what they call the base years and compare that to the growth that everybody else has. I think we're going to be in really good shape in the next biennium because we were down, and we're going to grow disproportionately compared to everybody else because we're picking up the hurricane losses again. I think we finally recovered. I'm, I'm very tired of talking about the hurricane, even though we're going to come back and talk about insurance later, not today, but, and what that looks like with FEMA, or you're going to talk about it at the end, but not, not in detail. So, I, I mean, our challenge next time, fortunately, we picked up the thirteen-one, and thanks to a lot of people, including, uh, Senator Creighton and Vettencourt and Representative Wally, and we've been thanking each and every one of them, but the challenge next time for us is to get out, we have to make our case. We have to make it not only for Lone Star, I mean, for community colleges, but for Lone Star in general. We, we have to make sure that they know what we're doing and what our accomplishments are, and especially on student success, because that's, um, they want to know how we're doing. And that has to do with graduates, and has to do with how much money they're making and how much, uh, where they're transferring to and just our general reputation. So there's a lot coming up, and we've already started talking about what that next session looks like, so.
I think, I think it's just important for people in the district, as well as those that, uh, work for us, that this money is not a given, and it may be the new normal, and that this is an ongoing effort. So we just want to kind of make that point publicly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to tell you, you, you all know, the, it just, the amount of money there depends on a couple of things. One, the economy, but two, the case that we make and show that we're using the money in the, in the way that they expected to make it, which is why I mean, we're trying to get, I mean, for, for Lone Star, we have to take care of our own business, but we have to get ourselves in alignment with what the community wants and what our, I mean, what the people in the state feel like. And I think if we can do that, um, we've got some work to do there, that's for sure. I think our community knows about community colleges. They know about Lone Star, but they're not the ones, they, they have a role in it, but we need to make a better case from a marketing standpoint and promoting ourselves about what we actually do, because we, we have the largest, we are the largest segment of enrollment in the state, community colleges are, so. Thank you.
One of the things I noticed, uh, Trustee Sullivan, this, this past session, and I'm not trying to patronize the chancellor, but it's amazing the kind of credibility that the chancellor has in Austin, from the governor all the way down. And to me, that's worth millions, you know, to our college. And I thank him every day for all, all of the stuff that he does to build goodwill in the community and throughout the entire state, for the good for our students and staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Thank you.
Okay, we, we, we need to vote. All of those in favor of adopting item number one, vote by the usual sign? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passed. Uh, item number twenty-five. Trustee Sullivan, would you tell us about what item, uh, twenty-five is?
Yes, sir, you bet. Um, Harris County Appraisal District.
I'm sorry, I, I need to do a motion first.
Motion?
Need a motion to consider item twenty-five on the congenitally. So move second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, your honor.
Sorry to get ahead of you there.
No, well, that was my fault. Go ahead.
Harris County Appraisal District is composed of six members. One member is elected by collectively all of the independent school districts in Harris County and the four community college districts. So the four community college districts are eligible to make a nomination by resolution for that person to serve on the Harris County Appraisal District Board. The current board member in that position is Pete Poppy from Deer Park ISD, and Mr. Poppy did not seek reelection to the school board, the district school board, so he's ineligible to serve. Therefore, there's a vacancy to be filled by election by all the ISDs and the four community colleges, and this is for a two-month term only, or, excuse me, a period of two months only. And then the process will start again at the end of the year for a full two-year term.
So do you have a?
I do. I made a, uh, recommendation that the board support Robert Sitten from Umbel ISD. Uh, Robert's former, uh, currently on the board, former past president of the board, and of course is in our service area.
Okay. Board members, any questions, concerns?
Are there others being, um, put forward by the other districts?
There are, and I don't know who they are, if it's in the backup, maybe?
If it's on the board book, I'm, let's see if I can get my board book open right quick.
Yeah, it's Laporte ISD, Aleaf IS, uh, all, yeah, Aleaf, Laporte, and Goose Creek, and Houston, uh, Umbel ISD. And Houston ISD has their own appointee because of their size.
Just a second, I can tell you who they are.
Are, are votes weighted by our student population or anything?
No, sir.
No.
Not for the community college districts. Thanks, Mario.
One district, one vote.
Okay, the, the four candidates are Jennifer Key, Ben Pappy, or Poppy, Robert Sitten, that's the one who is, he's recommending, and Deanne Thompson. And I don't know any of them. I, I Googled all of them, so I read about them.
If, if we don't vote for someone, then the other three community college districts will choose our representative.
Yeah, right, okay.
Is that simple?
The, the other colleges have somebody that they're pushing.
Yes.
We're promoting, we're promoting Sitten, so that's, that's the, we know him, so.
Any concerns, questions? All of those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Oppose? As has it. Thank you. Jennifer, it's your show.
Yes, now that we have next fiscal year's budget approved, we're still in this current fiscal year, so, uh, here I'm presenting, uh, to you the financial report, uh, um, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Um, and really, these, uh, forecasts have not changed substantially. So here, um, I guess for, uh, what we've, uh, brought in for revenue so far this fiscal year, we've brought in three hundred and forty-nine million in actual revenues, or ninety-two percent. And, um, other than the one outlier in the chart, you can see this is tracking roughly with where we're at in prior years for what proportion has been brought in, um, as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, on, uh.
Can you go back just for a second? I, I, when I first looked at this, I thought we had some dramatic falloff, but you might take a look at the, the legend on the left-hand side. Those are actually just percentage points, not, it's not like some huge drop-off, and there's some reason for that.
Yeah.
Yes, the bars is the actual, um, amount of revenues that have been brought in, whereas the yellow line is what percentage of the budgeted amount had been brought in by that point in time. So in the, in fiscal year seventeen, where you see that spike, that particular year, we brought in, um, significantly more revenues in total than what had been budgeted for. So that's why that percentage was so high in that particular year. Um, but you can tell that if you just kind of take that year out of it, the remaining years percentage-wise on that line is roughly where we're at this year. And so this chart, uh, shows in, you know, the same format for the actual expenditures as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The actual expenditures are at two hundred and seventy-six million, which is seventy-five point two percent. Now, this one, as you compare, again, now this one, the outlier that you kind of have to ignore is last year, because that, um, because of Harvey. But if you look at the other years, you can tell that we are still relatively low in expenditures, um, as of this point in time. Um, so we'll see where our final expenditure amount ends, um, by August thirty-first. Uh, but our forecasts are remaining, um, sixteen point one percent is what we forecasted when I was here in June. We don't have any significant changes to that, um, ending the year at sixteen point one percent. Um, and so I'm going to go, really, I want to get to the, the FEMA part, um, because really here, the net revenues and then expenditures, we, again, we really have no significant changes from the variances that I've reported in prior months. So Fund Thirty-Five Harvey Recovery, here, uh, we are at thirty-nine point five million in expenditures, which is up from thirty-seven point four million the prior month. Um, and at Kingwood specifically, we're at thirty-four point nine million, up from thirty-two point nine. That's where our expenditures are for Hurricane Harvey. Here's our FEMA reimbursement update. Um, this is sort of the same list of what we have received in reimbursements from FEMA that I shared last time. In yellow are the new ones, so we have gotten a little bit more, about a hundred and sixty thousand more, uh, bringing us up to a total of seven hundred thousand in FEMA reimbursements. Um, but here, I mean, really, the good news here, it, it's not reflected on the financial statements included yet because they're as of June thirtieth, but at the end of July, we did receive, not from FEMA, but from the state, thirteen point one million. That thirteen point one million that we got through this legislative session, the cash hit our bank account end of July.
Oh, that was quick.
Thirteen point one million.
Right.
That, when I'm here next month, I will be excited for that to actually show up on those financial statements.
Yes.
Um, but so FEMA, we're just going to keep working along. I mean, so here, this is the chart of sort of the different stages, um, of the process with FEMA. Uh, steps one through three is really on us, um, you know, us getting the work done, because it's a reimbursement program. So us getting the work done and then getting the documentation to FEMA, um, and then steps four through, uh, six, um, are FEMA's, FEMA's steps. So this is where we just continue to work through all of this.
So at the current rate of, at the current, at the current rate of reimbursement from FEMA, how long do we think it's going to take?
I don't want to do that math. I'm still motivated to keep working on it, so that, that math might not help that.
I, I did it, I did it while you were talking, and it'll be a hundred years, so.
I'm still going to keep working on it. And my team, we're still going to keep working on it. Um, I mean, so hopefully some of this, right, so the, we have to submit everything to FEMA as projects, as different packages, and so we, um, we had received some advice from our FEMA representative that the smaller projects, um, have a different, uh, and a faster process of review, so maybe focus on those first to get some dollars in. So that is the majority of the seven hundred thousand that you're seeing. Um, but that does mean, um, once FEMA gets to the larger projects, then we're talking larger chunks as a whole. So for example, there's, um, one project in particular, um, it was for the, the actual Black Memorial and remediation that was done at Kingwood. Um, that one, we keep tracking, um, as they're doing that review, but once that's approved and obligated to us, that one, that one's probably going to be like an eight or ten million dollar receipt at one time. So once we get into the bigger projects coming through, it's going to be larger chunks at a time, once they get that obligation. So it might not be a straight-line mathematical method.
We didn't talk about it tonight. It was one of the board agenda items, but, uh, we, we decided not to talk about it. Maybe in hindsight, we should have. We have increased our insurance considerably, so, um, we learned some lessons. We thought we were prepared, but we really will be prepared the next time. And we've looked at all of our policies and procedures and getting ready and how we respond. And when we had the tropical storm coming in, we went through kind of a dry run, so we're always working on, uh, that. And that, that responsibility falls under Mario to organize everything and the college president. So I, we will be ready for the next one, except when you have fifty inches of rain, you can be prepared for everything, and still not. Then we've got some, uh, major engineering work going on over at, uh, our review right now over at Kingwood to address some of the ongoing flooding issues that we've had over there, so.
Yes.
Drainage problems we've had over there, so.
Uh, yes, so I might mention there, too, we've also started to discuss with FEMA remediation projects. So this entire amount that we're looking at right now, uh, for FEMA reimbursement is just for the reconstruction of Kingwood. Um, FEMA's policies do say we can then also go do, um, up to the amount of what they, of what the reconstruction cost. We can go do in mitigation projects that they will also reimburse. So, I mean, if we are willing to keep working with them and, on a cash perspective, dealing with the wait time, then we can also go do significant amounts of mitigation projects at Kingwood. Um, it's just something, since clearly we see the time lag between us doing, us expending the cash and receiving reimbursement, we just have to make sure we're prepared for that. But if we're willing to wait that game with them, then there's mitigation work we can do as well. do as well, that we can evaluate. And that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job. Board members, are there any future agenda items you would like to have put on the agenda?
Our convocation this year is at the Marriott, August 19th? 19th, and we'll send a note out, but just to, you'll put that on your calendar, August the 19th, at the Marriott in the Woodlands. So we'll have 1,800, 2,000 employees there, so.
And all board members?
Yeah, all board members are invited, yeah.
All right. Thank you. It's a little bit early, but the meeting is over.